openings like they've got the countdown.
Yeah.
We have a phone, we have a phone.
Yeah, it's somewhere between, yeah, the phone, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock, I'm sure that.
Yeah.
I'm on.
You ready?
Yep.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda this evening is we've got some new members to swear in.
Yes.
Erin, you're the new guy, so you get to go first.
All right.
You just want, you want us all to do it simultaneously?
You can just all do it simultaneously from where you are.
Just stand up?
Yeah.
There's no, there's really no even photo op, I'm sorry.
And that's fine.
Nobody's got a camera?
Nobody's got a camera.
Nobody's got a camera.
All right, all right, go right ahead.
Stand there.
Yeah, let me stand.
You're gonna stand?
At least a little.
Okay, all right.
We're gonna be here for half an hour.
Stand, it'll look official.
Okay.
Go.
I am first. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner in the City of Carson in the State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability.
And if you sign those and pass them over to Linda, she will notarize them and provide you with a copy.
Do you want to use glue on it?
Okay, sometimes glue and get it. And before we get too terribly involved this evening gentlemen, we need to swipe a new chair. Would anybody like to volunteer? Is there anybody that should be nominated?
What's wrong with who we have?
I am happy to do it, but in the same sense, if somebody else would like that pleasure, I'd hate to deny them the opportunity.
Okay, I guess that makes it unanimous, you're it.
Do we have a motion?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
To keep Tom Pierce as the chair.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Not gonna vote for myself, so I'll abstain if you want to. Sorry.
You affirm that?
Mm-hmm.
You on one then, Eric? Next item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody has any additions or corrections, if they can be kind enough to give them to Linda, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been passed. Next item on the agenda, public hearing preliminary plat, Stone Ridge, second.
So in your packet, you had a copy of the plat, there's also a bigger copy if you want Joe to pass that around to you, take a look at a bigger printout of that. And then we did meet with staff and put together some staff recommendations. The fire chief did review the plat this evening, and so in addition to what's in your notes, he's actually recommending that there be a hydrant between lots three and four, between lots seven and eight, and between lots five and six, so that's one more hydrant that is shown. There will, there will not be hydrants on the corners, the street public work supervisor noted that a lot of snow would get piled in those corners due to the house called the flat, so they will be moved off the corner. Is there any question about that? So that's all I have for you.
That's it, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, if anybody has anything they would like to share with us, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, give them your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's David Martin, I'm with Mass and answer being, how are you? I guess before I start, I start jotting down the lot numbers for the hydrants.
Yeah.
And I've caught lots three and four.
Between three and four, seven and eight, and then...
Oh, you want one to move it?
Five and six.
That would give us round about 300 feet in between, in between hydrants, so that's really what we would like to see for... Okay. Hi, I went over the staff review letter and kinda went over a few of the comments with Brandon. And while we kinda talked about the fire hydrants on lots six and fourteen, but that comment's no longer valid.
Uh-huh.
I guess one, one item for discussion is the five-foot sidewalks, and him and I discussed this a little bit. Stone Ridge was originally proposed with four-foot wide sidewalks, and that's what's presently being constructed out there, our four-foot wide sidewalks. In fact, we, we did our original survey in, I think, July, and then I was just out there a week or so ago, and they just put in a new section of sidewalk on the easterly side of Seventh, and that's, that's four feet in width. So Brandon did tell me the, you know, the position the city's taking, I guess, and everything new from here on out is supposed to be five feet, but I was just wanting to have flexibility on that since we're tying in everything that's four feet already.
I know, just from what I've heard and seen, there's been a lot of talk about that, but if we don't start somewhere, sometime...
Sure.
No matter where we start, there's gonna be a transition, just is.
Sure.
But we need to start somewhere moving forward, or else it'll never, and if we give in one instance, everybody else is gonna ask for the same thing.
Sure.
I, I don't know how to say it any different, but I think we need to stick to our guns here, or else it'll never get instituted.
That's fine, so everything from here on out is five foot in width?
As far as I know.
Okay. I did talk to Brandon about the location of the gas easement, there is no longer an easement on the subject property along the east side of A Street, that's all been vacated, so that's gone. I guess, let's talk about stormwater management. This project was originally designed for, I should say, what's that, thought that there'd be a regional pond to our north, on Mr. Shute's property. So we don't have any room on our property, or even a place, a valid place to put a temporary pond, so we need to move forward with the regional pond, I guess, on Mr. Shute's property. We did, I did have some initial conversation with Brandon in regards to the city taking the lead on the regional pond, doing the design and construction for the regional pond, and I just kinda wanted to further discuss the city's thoughts on that. You know, we're trying to build a pond on somebody else's property here, you know, which makes it difficult for all parties involved, I think it would just go more smoother, the city were involved and they did secure the property, and did do the design and construction. We have several places like this throughout town where, you know, development is waiting to happen because we don't have a pond in place, and it's always on somebody else's property. I just think, you know, things could maybe move ahead a little bit better if a plan was made up, kinda delineating where some regional ponds need to go, and city starts securing property for the construction of those ponds as things progress forward.
Unless the city does something like that.
The only problem, we got the same situation in northeast, right now, same, same, almost same setup. How do we proceed with the city procuring property, almost forcibly procuring property on an undeveloped property?
Yeah, that's a conundrum.
I understand where you're coming from, I do, I'm just trying to figure out how we can do something like that. Has it ever been done before?
Well, there, there are places that, you know, do have regional ponds, I think Byron has, has a regional pond plan, kind of, I haven't done any work there in a while, but I don't know. I know the last project I've done there, the city is building a regional pond for the project, so...
But I, I get that, but Carson has never done anything like that, that I know of.
No.
And that regional pond at Byron, I believe, was kind of engineered right from the start of the development. Are you talking in the northeast section?
I'm talking for Scott Brooks.
Brooks, the direction?
Yeah. Yeah, this would be something where, you know, since, you know, a lot of things can happen with the property to the north, it would be a matter of securing the property and then start the initial construction of the regional pond for what we need. And then, once the north property moves forward with development, then the final construction of the regional pond would take place.
Okay, so where, where does the stormwater drain now on your current property, to the east?
To the north, north what?
To the north?
Yeah, what it does is it, it drains right along the east side of Eighth.
Yep.
Through the county swale, and then it goes north into that existing swale that traverses through the property.
Drains into the ditch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and depending on where the regional pond's located on that property, I mean, it could manage more than just this property and Mr. Shute's property, it could manage, you know, stuff on the east side of Mandarrell Avenue if one chose to do that.
So it's gonna be a benefit to him probably in the future, too? If that was ever developed in any other way, this would be something that would be set up?
Well, the, the, the initial workings would be there, the pond, regional pond might not be constructed yet, but the land would be secured and, you know, a design would be in place, I guess preliminary design. You really can't do the final design until one knows what the layout's actually gonna be and how the grades are all gonna work together.
How many fuel stations does the city have, northern?
Yeah, I'm not sure that our stormwater fund even has the money to purchase property right now.
I was just gonna say, this would be an expensive venture for the city.
Well, and it would be something where, you know, the city would be taking the upfront cost, but, you know, the city would then recoup its costs based on the percentage of everybody that contributes, everybody would pay their fair share. It wouldn't just be a city improvement project that they couldn't recoup their costs from...
Does that require actually more land in the city?
Would have to.
I don't think, I think the city's property line isn't that terribly far north off this town.
Right, it's the, it's the north side of Stone Ridge, that's...
Right.
I think that's something the engineer would have to look into a little more.
What it comes down to is...
I can have the, we have time to set up a close meeting with the attorney to discuss property acquisitions.
What it comes down to also is, do you really wanna have ponds scattered all over your town? So, I guess what I'm thinking, the way I think it would work, is if, if the city would come up with a plan for where they wanna have ponds in town, and then go out and over time, purchase that land, so that as development happens, we can come and build our portion of that pond for whatever we need to handle our stormwater. Because it, it kinda turns into a public utility once the water leaves us, I guess is the way I see it.
I get that, but the other problem is, all the people that have created storm ponds are gonna...
Well, and this isn't getting something for nothing.
Right.
This is just, this is just, we don't have space here, and this is an isolated instance of doing this, so I'm just, this is kind of the first blush at trying to maybe come up with a bigger plan that's more than just, just for here.
So that there's other ones, too, that were, that you were talking about?
Yeah.
So Meadowbrook Second, which was seventeen lots, I believe they were to work with Wally Minor for a storm pond.
There's probably over a hundred acres there that could potentially be developed once the regional pond's in place.
There's other people that are looking at those properties, too, but they're all contingent on Wally.
Another one would be Matt Leff, when we did his development, we had to do a temporary pond, 'cause ultimately there would be a regional pond to his east, so we ended up doing a small temporary pond there for now, just to get things moving forward.
How big of a pond does this development need?
You know, I didn't really run any calculations, I would probably say maybe two acres or something. We have about four, I, I do know this number, we have about 4.35 acres of impervious cover in this case.
I'm afraid that goes a little bit outside the scope of planning and zoning, you'd be able to discuss acquiring properties in a centralized plan.
Yeah.
If you guys wanna take that up to city council, just if there's a mechanism to do that.
I think the, or the city council would even be able to look at it, we'd have to talk, get the attorney to check it out, and the engineer. Correct, Teresa?
Mm-huh, yep, I mean, there would be discussion spots purchasing real estate.
Right, and annexing.
Which would have to be discussions with the township, unless it's part of our orderly annexation.
That, this parcel would be part of the orderly annexation agreement, but generally it's when the property owner generally...
Makes a request.
Makes a request, and then they pay for the cost, they pay also for the cost of the annexation, so... That would, it would change our process for annexation as well.
So if I own that land today, my first order of business would be to sell it to the city, so the city owns it, absorbs those costs?
Yeah.
Just so you know what you're getting into.
Right.
I would look at it.
Yeah, the property is also not currently in our electric territory, which had another layer of conversation.
Have you talked with the owner at all about, about drainage in that property at all, at this point?
Very briefly, just, just brought it up, and he's open to listen, so we're, that's what we're at with that, so...
Actually, he's sitting actually right here.
He's hearing all of it, then?
I, I'm open to listening to ideas, if something's gonna be done out there, I mean, eventually, I don't know when the development's gonna happen, but it will happen, so, you know, having a, a better laid-out plan ahead of time would be in everybody's interest. My only other comment on it would be, I don't know how far along the city is, I'm thinking of extending Sixteenth Street and some side of school to the west, but that would cut through the property, and that plan should be in place before we put a pond someplace that, you know, would treat more issues.
Right.
But I'm open to, you know, whatever's best for, for everybody collectively, I'm open to listening.
So for right now, from what I see, we're gonna have to let the attorney and the engineer do some findings to see where we can move from there, and then maybe talk to finance, Nancy, to see if something like this is possible, if we can even afford to do it on our budget that we have right now.
Exactly, would we have to borrow for, to pay for the construction, and...
Right.
Yep.
Let me ask you a question, Dwayne, I mean, some of you guys have been here, Colin, a lot longer, if, okay, if, if something like this did move forward, would the developer, Mike, still pay for that stormwater, would it be wrong to charge him for the cost of a stormwater pond as part of this future pond?
I don't, I don't think we currently have that as part of our...
Well, we, because we haven't done it.
Yeah.
We haven't done the bodies to do it.
So we'd have to establish policy first to be able to, to do that.
Isn't there, isn't there a developer agreement in terms of how those, I mean, there was talk of one, I don't know if I ever saw it, but I thought there was a developer...
We do have a development agreement, the city attorney could certainly work on some language, I think the city engineer could figure out a cost of the constructed pond, and then, you know, divide that out by the number of acres that it would serve, and...
The reason I ask this question is, if we proceed further with this, there's gonna be another one in the northeast that's gonna come right on our heels if they hear this is going.
Mm-huh.
So we almost wanna be prepared for two rather than one. Okay, moving away from that, is there any other issues that we need to know?
No, no, I think that covers all of it, I guess, well, one other thing would be the trail access, Brandon mentioned, possibly, it was kicked around that there would talk of a sidewalk between lots five and six.
Is that where that water main easement, well, there's a water main easement to the street, and, and without the trail access, it basically means, you know, coming, going north to get on the trail to go south. If folks who are in that subdivision can access the trail over the top of the water main easement, then they'll have direct access to the trail.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that was, just thought that was kicked around, there's a, actually gonna be required. The only thing with the sidewalk in between two lots is, you know, it makes things difficult for the two property owners, too, for, and really, they only have to go a little bit north and a little bit west, and they're on the trail.
That, that's not what kids do.
You say, there'll be a trail there, but it's gonna be...
There will be a dress.
The other trail is down...
Alboni, it's secured for a future trail.
Actually, above, it's right there.
Is it right here?
It's right there, yeah, so, you know, the alternative is to put it in between the other, the other lots, but it seemed like a, yeah, but since there's already an easement for the water main...
Do those trails get maintained? I mean, snow removal and everything?
Uh, occasionally, depends how much time the county...
Depends on how bright the sun is.
Yeah, or if the county has the time, or...
Been really good this year.
Yeah, exactly.
Little maintenance.
Really good so far this year.
I myself don't like splitting properties with a sidewalk, a trail, or just, it doesn't appeal. If I was to build a house and I had a trail, right?
No, not what that kind of wants.
It'd be like living on a corner.
Right.
If you wanna live on a corner, fine, but if you're in a cul-de-sac, or area like that, it just, it wouldn't appeal to me.
That's why we have five-foot sidewalks.
Right, but again, they're, you know...
I understand.
Okay. The shortest distance between, uh...
I did that, but kids, in my cul-de-sac, they cut between two properties to get to St. John's Church.
Right.
You know, that's only a few kids, but if you put a sidewalk in there, and...
Yeah, yeah.
But that's just my preference.
That's fine.
That's pretty much all I have.
Okay, can we talk to the attorney and the engineer and the advisor, Mike?
Yeah, so you'll just, I guess, you know, once you close the public hearing, you'll have to make a determination about what your recommendation to the council will be. If it's, if you're not ready to approve the preliminary plat yet, then you could make a recommendation to the council to investigate stormwater management for the region, something to Bada Back, or recommend approval of preliminary plat subject to regional stormwater management plan, or something like that.
What was the purpose for the all lots on the north end here, lot A and B?
The adjacent property owner for lots, lot two and lot one, Stone Ridge, were interested in an additional 20 feet, so...
So they would purchase that?
Yes, that's the point of all lots, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything else they would like to share? If not, I will go ahead and open the public meeting, thank you. Personally, I think you need to have a discussion with the attorney and the engineer, this will be a recurring issue that we will see pop up again.
Oh, very much so, and if something like this goes through, we will be pushed even harder.
Is, is this something that's hindering developments? Is this something that we need to dig into?
Yes.
Probably a good idea.
It's a good problem, I mean, it's a good problem to have.
Yeah, I mean, there's... It's a great idea, we just gotta be careful how we do it, too.
Right.
I mean, if they don't do a regional, then it's the developer's force to go figure out where he's gonna go put his stormwater and move forward, so it doesn't, doesn't stop the development, it just...
We do have a cluster, basically.
Yeah, right.
So Linda, we would have sixty days to act on this application? And it looks like 12/24, the date on here.
Yeah, we submit it to Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, okay.
Does that give you enough time, sir?
Well, we have one or two council meetings in here.
Yeah, 'cause we need to attack this next planning zone.
Yes.
So you can table action until your next meeting?
This is, I think this is going to require more than just council meetings, I think this could require some special meetings to hammer all this out, at least at the council level, I just don't know that we can do it just at a general meeting, 'cause it's gonna take a lot of footwork to, and to get these answers. Because it's gonna take a lot of footwork to, and to get these answers.
So we can do a 60-day extension? In addition to the 60 days, the original 60 days?
We just need, like, to sign off on that.
Okay.
You have to agree to the...
60-day extension, we get to that place, okay.
So it'll be done in the next 30 days or so, and then?
Yep.
Go from there.
Or we'll have a pretty good idea of where we are.
Yeah.
We have any idea what Brandon's workload is?
Uh, we do.
With 16 Street and everything else that we got going on?
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's gonna rely heavily on some of his input.
It, yeah. It may rely heavily on whether or not his firm is willing to put some extra manpower behind him to, yeah. Because we're, he's hot and heavy into the Highway 57. I'd look right now.
I guess with all I said, gentlemen, I need some sort of motion on how you would like to move forward.
I, I move to table this, at least till the next planning commission allows the council level to get some work done.
Do you have a motion, sir? Did you have some additional comments?
Can I just ask for clarification how everybody feels about the sidewalk between Lot Five and Six? Because otherwise, we could tentatively prove the plot, but table the... Table the, the decision until further finding, correct?
Yeah, I knew it was gonna get messy if you tried to split it up like that. I mean, we can maybe provide comments on some of it, but I think you can, you take it as one piece or another.
Okay.
I think that's the cleaner way to do it.
Okay.
Agree.
Any additional comments? So we do have a motion to table?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let me know what you can get done, I'll just assume this will be on the agenda next month for the...
Yep. It's, well, it's on the agenda for the council meeting, we have time to do that.
There's any value in getting us together before then to discuss the matter, I guess I'm available.
Okay.
If not, we stay right out of your way.
Okay. So Brandon generally is here in the office at 8:00 AM on Thursday morning. So I will circle back with him, but if you think about maybe what your Thursday mornings look like, maybe like the 31st or, uh... Oh, yeah, 31st.
Do you have a, an agenda, full agenda for this Thursday?
Actually, this Thursday, we have pushed it back to 10:30 and we are meeting with potential developers.
Okay. I was gonna say, because I can be part of that discussion, but I'm gonna be here for the department head meeting anyway.
On the, uh...
That's this Thursday, right?
This Thursday, yeah. The 24th would also be a possibility, so the 24th or, um, 31st. But I will, I, I think the 24th is gonna come too, too fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just gonna come too quick.
Keep us informed.
Okay, okay.
Next time this evening, Rosington, is that right?
Well, you can call your group.
I'll get it right.
Yeah, that's okay. This is Laura, who's been working on us to evaluate our ordinances.
Good evening, commissioners. As I said, I'm Laura Chamberlain, I think, oh, I think we're here before, maybe not. New face, okay, cool. Back in October, we had our kickoff meeting for the zoning and subdivision ordinance update. And since then, have been working on a few items and just gonna walk you through kind of the approach and then we can dig into the nitty-gritty of what was within your packets tonight. So since the October planning commission meeting, we did some stakeholder engagement of developers and people related to, who have gone through the development process through the city, as well as some general public engagement, facilitating a survey for people who came into the office for general permits, things along those lines. Based off of that engagement, summarized what I had heard at the kickoff meeting with city staff, as well as our discussion at the planning commission, plus the engagement. From that summary, pulled together what I identified as four main areas that are issues currently within the zoning and subdivision ordinances and then how to move forward with them. Those four main issues are simplification and ease of use, compliance with the comprehensive plan, subdivision regulations, and then enforcement and implementation. And I'll get a little bit further into that after this overview. From there, using that framework of those four different main issues identified, I conducted an analysis of our current, the current ordinances to identify where those gaps are or shortcomings. And that is laid out in the majority of the attachment that you had today, the diagnosis and annotated outline. At the end of that document is, includes a new organizational approach to how I'm proposing that the ordinances be organized and set up. And then the example land use cable, which would be a part of that organizational structure. And I'll go through that further later. And then next step, so this evening, want to walk through with you those issues identified, the analysis of current ordinances, and then the new organizational approach. And get your input on if that looks like the direction that you think would work and actually addresses the issues that you see identified within zoning and subdivision ordinances right now. Once that direction has been established, then I will work with Teresa on a budget and timing for accomplishing all of these items and establish, and by working with the city, identify where the priority areas are and what that schedule can look like. So if this needs to be broken out over a while in order to accommodate budgeting issues, then where the priority is, where you can, what needs to happen first versus things that can happen over time. And really focusing on that implementation side of things. So before we get started in our discussion, does anyone have any questions? So turning to the packet, the attachment that you had of the document, CASN zoning and subdivision ordinance, diagnosis and annotated outline, it's a very long title. Starting with our issues identified, based off of, as I said, those, all of the inputs that we got at the beginning of this project, the first thing that came out of it was that the organization of the current ordinances needs some fine tuning, definitely some simplification and just needs in general to be easier to use for staff and the general public alike. There are a number of regulations that are split amongst many sections and so a topic can be covered in one part of zoning and then another part of zoning and you don't necessarily know that you're supposed to look at all three or four different references and so people are getting half information or sometimes those sections have been updated when the others haven't. So you have inconsistencies across the chapters. So our, my approach is that a reorganization of how all of these chapters are set up with an emphasis on getting rid of duplicate information and especially conflicting information. That's obviously a number one priority. And then where we can, creating ordinance language that is straightforward and easy to understand as much as possible. Get rid of the like legalese sort of language so that it's easier for staff to implement, but then also easier for you as a planning commission to know what is written in there. And then I know something that staff very much emphasized on was clearing up definitions and making sure that they are compiled as well as easy to understand and also tied to what's actually within the regulations themselves. And get rid of the extra information that we don't need. So overall, simplifying and organizational structure, this is what I would recommend as the first step in updating the zoning ordinance, as we'll talk about in a little bit with the zoning use cable. We kinda don't really know what we're dealing with until we can see it all in one page and know... You know, I don't wanna go adjusting lots, recommendations of lot sizes or things like that if we don't actually know what we're comparing apples to apples. So this is sort of the first step I would recommend as far as approaching the ordinance update. Next within that then is compliance with the comprehensive plan. As most of you worked on CASN upward, there are some new land uses or goals and policies that had been proposed through the 2040 plan. And a thorough assessment of how zoning should relate to these goals and policies is recommended. And so within the comp plan, there are, the expansion of downtown as a future land use currently covers two to three to four existing zoning districts. How does zoning need to, as being ordinance language that needs to be abided by, relate to those goals and policies at a land use level? What restrictions need to be put into ordinances versus perhaps design guidelines, which aren't not necessarily regulated, but more of you kinda have some give and take within them and they live in an outside document outside of the ordinance. Further along those lines, I know that an eco or tech business park in the northern part of the city have been talked about. Is that something that would require its own zoning district? Or is that something that could fall easily under existing zoning regulations? That kind of assessment is what's needed under this section of issues identified. Another idea that had been presented within the comp plan is the green belt idea, especially along the river or stream corridors. And an analysis to understand if zoning is the best, zoning and/or subdivision regulations are the best mechanism to implement that. And in some cases, it might be, and in other cases, it probably won't. And so finding where that line is and what should be regulated through adopted ordinance versus other plan documents is finding that balance. And then finally, figuring out areas within the zoning map that might have conflicting, allow conflicting land use than what's shown on the future land use map. Currently, there are some areas, especially as you go further into the growth areas of the city, where current zoning is manufacturing and industrial, but the future land use is medium density residential. Obviously, that's a conflict, but how do you build in the sort of timing? You don't wanna create a bunch of non-conforming uses on the zoning level, but also don't want to impede future growth of medium density residential because the zoning is not compliant. So figuring out that implementation is, falls under that. The next area of issues identified, sort of seen in a, just our previous conversation with subdivision regulations. There's a lot of elements talked about with the city engineer and city staff. Knew that there are, there are areas within the subdivision ordinance specifically that need updating and some areas that need to be removed, other things need to be added. Right now, there is the process called the general development plan, which has been, the role of which has been a little bit confusing and on the parts of developers and the city. So recommending that that be replaced with what I call a concept plan review and very clearly within the subdivision ordinance stating that concept, what mechanisms the concept plan has and that it is not an approval on the city's side, but a step in the process so that the city as well as developers can discuss development potential without having all of the investment on the developer's side of a preliminary plat. And talking about earlier this evening with regional stormwater, responsibilities for construction and maintenance of infrastructure. So this can include stormwater as well as roads and other industry standards. How and in, to what specificity those need to be, the responsibility for and then the design standards for those elements, what needs to be within the subdivision ordinance and what doesn't. A lot of cities are adopting outside of the ordinance, design standards or engineering design standards for usually written and maintained by the city engineer for subdivision that can live outside of the subdivision ordinance so that every time maybe an industry standard changes, you don't have to go through an entire amendment process for, I don't know, your radii of a curve or something like that. So boiling those down and identifying where those are. This area of our ordinance update would obviously be heavily utilizing, or heavily involved, involving the city engineer and his input. And then the final element that we saw as needing to be, or could be addressed or through the, this update process, is enforcement and implementation of the zoning ordinance. In general, from our engagement with the general public showed that most people understand the need to come to the city for permits. You know, not everyone loves to go through that, but, you know, they understand it as a necessary step. But found the process to be sometimes confusing, not knowing who to talk to or that information that they got at different levels were, was inconsistent. So creating that consistency and enforcement and how people interact, the general public interact with the ordinances is very important. So things like, I know that we have forms and updating those, making sure that they're consistent across the board, as well as having maybe cut sheets of this is the process if you're doing X, Y, or Z. And making things very user-friendly, probably having those same resources online in a way that is easily accessible. And then as well, heard some, from our discussion at the planning commission level, needing some clarification on some different elements and requirements of the zoning ordinance. When is a variance appropriate or when is a conditional use appropriate? And what do you all of... And what do all of those actually, what needs to go into all of those so that your decision making over time can be consistent and well informed? So those were the four areas that felt that we could address through this process and hopefully create some clarity with all of that. Any questions before we move on to the detailed review? Okay, great. So currently the area of the, we're dealing with four different chapters of the city's code. Those include chapter 150, building regulations and construction, chapter 151, mobile homes, chapter 152 subdivision, sorry, actually it's five chapters, chapter 153 floodplain management, and chapter 154 zoning. And so we'll go chapter by chapter. Within each, there are what I call articles, sort of heading within that grouped together different sections. Under chapter 150, there's only one article, general provision. This language or this chapter is, addresses items with the building code, doesn't require much variation. Right now the city has moved all definitions from different chapters under this chapter's 150 point, section 08. And so as an issue of hierarchy and referencing, I would recommend that if we want to keep all definitions for all five of these chapters together, that those definitions should have their own chapter and then be referred to in each chapter subsequently. It's just kind of more of a technical thing, but as far as making sure that they're in the right place within the hierarchy.
So that, maybe we could just see, did anybody have any questions about what she had put together as far as what was currently in?
Oh, yeah, that's like-
In our ordinance? Because of, you know, we can maybe just go right onto her annotated outline. Unless there was something in one of those chapters that you thought she needed to cover for us specifically?
Fair.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know-
Explore that for the next ordinance.
Right, right, right. Yeah. So as she said, she has some definite suggestions for us on how our new ordinance would be laid out. I think that's like your last one or two pages-
Yes.
-of her upper handout. And it starts with annotated outline of new ordinances. So maybe we can just skip right there?
Yeah, yeah, perfect. That works for me.
Okay.
So, thank you. As I was saying, compiling all of the definitions from all of these five different chapters into one and making them clear, that was a number one goal from staff, I think. And so putting those definitions in their own chapter and then each subsequent chapter could have just by reference, all definitions in chapter, whatever it is, 150 or whatever, shall apply. And then the next chapter, including those under building regulations and construction, and then adding as a second article, those that are currently within chapter 151, mobile homes. That chapter has language, the current 151 is about the construction of individual mobile homes and frost footings and things along those lines, what inspections are needed. That will be verified with the building official to make sure that there is some state statute language we have to make sure that we're maintaining. And if that needs to be its own chapter, that can, that's certainly fine, but it felt like it could be put under building regulations and construction. The next chapter would be subdivisions as is currently there. The only major difference is the fourth article, that would include a concept plant, excuse me, concept plan review versus the general development plan, which is in the current And then design standards, there might be a possibility for moving some design standards for manufactured home park subdivisions into there. There's also a possibility that that should remain in zoning. You have to, again, it's very regulated by the state statute language, so we want to make sure that we're in compliance there. And then another shift that I'm proposing is to, instead of having floodplain management as its own chapter, because floodplanes are managed as zoning overlay district, to move that into the zoning chapter. And then under what you can see is chapter five, article three, part C, our overlay district, that's where floodplain management would go as an overlay. That way your flood zone, or your floodway and flood fringe overlay zones would be shown on the map and made much more clearly for how we're setting up the rest of the zoning chapter. That development is restricted or at least regulated in those different zones. Going down further in article three of the zoning chapter, proposing to completely reorganize how we're approaching the underlying zoning or base district zoning. Those are R1, R2 agricultural, all of those. Currently each sector, each zoning district has a section of purpose and then permitted uses, conditional uses, and then lot dimensions, site dimensions. And those can easily be brought all together into different tables. So to have the establishment of those districts and their purpose statement as the first kind of section of this base district, and then to have a use table which is pulled together in here. This is the current uses as all listed word for word within the zoning ordinance right now. P is for permitted, C is conditional, and then later in the chapter prohibited is P-R-O. I wanted to kind of show this as is, to show that right now there are a lot of uses under each district that are very similar, but have like one or two word differences. So you can see, single family residences is the language for the agricultural zone. Single family detached dwellings is R1 and R2 as permitted. And single family detached and detached dwellings is what's permitted in commercial. So clarifying that, compiling it and so if someone wants to build a single family detached home, they can just look across and say, all right, that's permitted in these different districts. It's conditional in this district and it's all in one spot. As we get into some of the more, the uses that have maybe conditions tied to them or other elements, design standards, for instance, nursing homes or things like that, in the notes column, that is where we would have use reference for use specific standards. And that is later within our ordinance structure under article four, under, let's see, part F, use specific standards. So that's where, you know, if you have a drive-in or something like that, drive-through restaurant, the conditions or other standards that need to happen for that, rather than having all of that wording within the table itself. And having that cross-reference would also be an electronic cross-reference, you can just hyperlink it, go one to the other and it would be hopefully as clear cut as possible. Similar to the use table then, would also have lot dimension standards and site dimension standards that are also within table forms. So that where you measure your front yard, step back, your side yard, all of that kind of stuff, those would be standardized and referenced across all of the zoning districts so that they don't get lost. And within that too, to have more visual aid, drawings or examples just to help as far as reference. I find them more useful. I'm sure that people who don't read zoning ordinances every day would really find them useful. So that's where, that's the new approach that we, I am recommending for zoning in particular. And then underneath that then would, we'd have the overlay district, which includes floodplain. Currently the city does not have any shoreland ordinances. I don't know that we are required to. That's something that through this process, our team would work with the DNR to verify that shoreland doesn't need, but if that is something that's needed, then we would add that to here. And then another major change is, would be to put planned unit developments, PUDs, into an overlay district and the regulations therein would be under overlays. Currently the city has PUDs as a conditional, approved through a conditional use permit, but then it is also an overlay district. Most cities have one or the other. And I think with the structure that we're looking at here, an overlay makes more sense than to continue having it through conditional use permit. But that being said, if conditional use permit turns out to be the best way to do it, that would be then pulled into our use table and the regulations to be another use based standard. The next article then is development standards. And- So those are then broken out between performance standards, parking loading and circulation, off-street parking and loading, and then landscaping, screening, walls and fences. Exterior lighting is something that currently is not explicitly addressed, but it would be part of the new structure. And then adding with a possibility grading, drainage tree preservation elements along those lines. And then as I said before, use specific standards that currently sit within, I need to double check the reference. Right now the article three of your zoning ordinance is just general regulations and that's sort of a catch-all for a lot of these elements. So to organize them out and make them easier to find and navigate. And then that is it as far as organization goes.
A couple of questions. We just recently went through a variance process that was basically queued up as a neighborhood designed exemption. Have you ever come across those type of things rather than the formal variance process? Can something like that be established?
A neighborhood design exemption, can you try-
Let me give you the scenario.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay. It's one of the last two lots in a whole development.
Okay.
And the structure to be built to match the neighborhood, the houses that were built in the area. If it would have been set within the setbacks, probably would have stood out as an anomaly to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So we approved the variance because it would, the building proposed met the design standards of the neighborhood. So rather than go through the whole formal variance process like we did, is there something that we can do based on the character of the neighborhood as an exemption?
I haven't heard of that formally written in. I do work with some cities that kind of on the opposite side, they have built neighborhoods that maybe were built in the 50s and 60s and people want to expand their homes now. And so the city has established what they call an expansion permit where what would normally be a variance because you are maybe going up a floor or going further back along the same step back. They have made a formal process to make that easier, not necessarily require a public hearing or, but still come before the planning commission, you know, figuring out what those different steps are. So it's certainly something that we could look into and work with the city attorney once those details are figured out of, is there a process that needs to be established for maybe meeting neighborhood standards or something like that that could be outside of a variance? I will say that once the organization is worked through and figured out, then it'll be a lot easier with the tables to kind of understand how the zoning is actually being applied and then maybe seeing across different zones, oh, this is actually not working as far as something that might be triggering a lot of variances that aren't maybe necessary in the future. So that assessment is kind of rolled into this, but we don't know exactly what we'll find until it's there, or until we get there.
Right. So for example, I think it wasn't variance for the rear setback.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then I think what we're saying is we might find out that our rear setback is not working overall.
It wasn't an excessive request, it was different to like three feet.
Okay, yeah.
It wasn't, you know, necessarily out of character with the neighborhood.
Yeah. And I think with the way your current ordinance is written, I do think a variance in that case would make sense. So the process that you had in place seemed to work, but you know, through this process, maybe there's an alternative that we can figure out.
Looking forward to go faster than a variance which takes months.
Yeah, well, something less intrusive.
Yeah.
The other, based on our earlier discussion with all these retention points, I'm assuming that would be part of the floodplain overlay. Is that typically where those are placed or are they separate?
No, typically stormwater regulations are really managed through the subdivision ordinance as well as-
That would be more the current-
If there's shoreland and elements like that, usually zoning doesn't get as involved in that. But shoreland, drainage- But, shoreland, drainage, some cities do have stormwater management ordinances that are tied to their zoning, often.
But if we're talking about regional ponds?
Yeah.
Now, we're talking something greater that may require some sort of an overlay district, right?
It's very possible, yeah, that.
Or we can make it a utility, you know, move it to a utility ordinance, and then have a fee that goes along with the cost of the utility, like the whack-and-sack. And, so, it's got sewer, water, electric, and stormwater as utilities.
And outside of the zoning authority and.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what a lot of cities do. There are, some cities regulate through like a grading permit, some of those elements, but in the adoption of best practices for individuals, typically it's construction. So, best management practices for avoiding runoff specifically during construction, and those are usually written, probably within your building permit.
Right.
Right now, and so.
And we do include usually in our preliminary patent final plan approval, the engineer's final review and approval of the grading plan, so.
But if it turns out that the direction that the city goes is to adopt a regional stormwater plan, which then is implemented through subdivision, that's certainly something that we would want to obviously reference and make sure that it's being implemented through all of those processes, and also through the review of any of those applications coming forward. But detailing all of that would probably not live within the ordinances that we're dealing with.
If we're just looking to restructure, better define current zoning and ordinances, I would assume that we can largely do that within the scope of this for all. But if we look at changing anything, we're looking at public hearings and getting the Republican vote?
Actually, any change.
So, even if you're just trying to better define a word?
Right.
You're still going to have a public hearing.
Public hearing. So, this is a way to say, we're going to have one big public hearing at the end of this, instead of series, like one after another. We'll just get it all straightened out and have one big public hearing.
That will be very interesting. Either it'll be packed in here, or we don't.
Exactly.
That's how those usually go.
Yeah. About a month later, when somebody's trying to do something. And they only know the old rules. But anything's got to be better than what we have right now.
Yeah. Well, I think what Laura's asking for is for us to let her know, does this annotated outline for the new ordinances look like the direction that we want to take? And then, she will work with us on the budgeting and the schedule for accomplishing this new outline.
At least it's a start. Now, if we'd start with this, we can tweak it a little bit as we're going, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I think understanding that, especially through the budgeting and everything like that, knowing that it'd probably be easier to do it all at once, but not necessarily feasible to do it all at once, from a budgetary standpoint, identifying where the priorities are, and then kind of what that process needs to look like, so that, you know, you can kind of pick it up, and then if you need to allocate money for our stormwater regional plan, you can do that instead. And so, wanting to provide that flexibility and knowing that it could take a while to bring all together.
But I think even you, once you start putting this together, there may be things that you need to change on this moving forward as you're going through it.
Correct.
It's a start. We need to start somewhere.
So, this gets the things in order, that's kind of the first step. Get things in order, sorted out. And then, with the next step, how does it tie into the comprehensive plan? Are there elements in the comprehensive plan that get shared between the two documents?
Yeah, so, the comprehensive plan is the guiding document, and then the zoning and subdivision ordinances are the implementation of that. And so, the zoning, what is in that ordinance eventually, once it's adopted, that's the law. And so, that's what, that is the implementation of that policy. So, if what's within the zoning ordinance contradicts what's up here, then that's a problem, that's where it's conflict. And, you know, it could be that maybe what's written in the comp plan needs to be amended in order to, once you get into the details of what actually, how it's applied, or what is on the ground within the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance needs to change. And so, yes, the approach of establishing the new structure and then going through that and analyzing, okay, now we know that we have all of our uses, we know what, everything, where it sits now. Do we need two zoning districts within our downtown, or what we consider downtown? Do they have distinct enough zoning to need differences? You know, how distinct is our R1 versus our R2, and what does that look like? And so, that would be part of the kind of compliance of the comp plan, or the combination between those first two issues.
You're right, we need to create some, yes, that's organic enough products, as the ebb and flow, is it ebbs and flows?
So, if we say, yep, let us know what the schedule is and let us know what the price is, would you have that for us at our next meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
That is my intention, yeah.
Okay.
It probably, I don't know that I would attend that, but I could, we'll talk through that.
Yeah, and Brandon could come as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I think now that we know that this, if this is the direction to be going, then we can, we like to call them modules, break things down so that they're more kind of by topic and theme of how to actually address this. So, that's the next step.
Okay. So, perhaps you could just, yeah, have a motion to move forward with this outline and come back with pricing and modules.
Yeah. If someone would like to make a motion. I'll make that one. Have a motion, we'll have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Spie.
Aye.
The first. There you go. There you go.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Anyone have any additional business to say that could discuss this here?
I'll just bring up one thing, and that is that the county's going through their comprehensive plan development, and I would encourage everybody to go out onto the county website and take a review, it's in its draft form. One thing that's intriguing to me is the discussion about how they're going to redevelop the Stussy Quarry. And, you know, get an idea of what the county's got in mind, because we're going to be on the fringe of that in the near future. So, it's, you know, all of those that potentially affect our northern borders specifically, we should be looking at, be tuned into. So, I would encourage you to go up to the comprehensive plan and look at it.
Where is that conversation headed? I mean, what do they think?
Well, that's a heck of a door upon.
Yeah. I was like, that covers the whole region, doesn't it? Three cities.
Are they talking something residential, or are they talking something?
At one time, and I haven't gone into it in great detail myself, at one time, they were talking about converting that into a lake.
Yep.
Yeah.
And selling property around it.
Shoreline.
So.
And what you got.
So, yeah, I just encourage everybody just to go out there and take a look at it, just to, if anything, just to be informed.
They're moving everything across the road. Always interesting. Is there anything else, Sean?
I know I asked at our last meeting, but have we gotten any further with Mr. Walker?